Good evening, I'm gonna call this special work session to order on September 10. I'm actually gonna make a motion to amend the agenda at the top here. Like to make a motion to move the action item from the agenda this evening. The board being committed, being data-driven in decision-making needs a little more time. So that is my motion on amending the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Brandy. All those in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. And then can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Nikki. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, the bulk of the meeting this evening is to dig in on our Prop E. Successful campaign updates. We are so grateful again to the voters of MRH for approving the bond issue. Now it's time to get to work. So thanks for being here at ITNER team and actually Mike Whalen, I think I'm probably turning it over to you.
Thank you, Katie. First of all, I just want to thank the board as well as Dr. Hall for that I didn't wear out my welcome the end of last year. And I was asked to come back to work with this wonderful group of people. And I will say retirement is wonderful. However, I didn't realize how much I missed working in a collaborative group. And I'm excited to be a small part to assist you all in this very important work. And I've already had a lot of fun, so let's get going. It's my pleasure to turn this portion of the meeting over to Mrs. Julie Villa. She's got a presentation that will go over the various projects. It's not going to be in real great detail, but it's just the general description of the items that will be addressed at both the elementary school as well as the early childhood school. So Julie, are you ready to?
I am ready. Yep, let me share my screen. And I want to introduce also the rest of my team that's on the call right now. I don't think Dennis is actually on, although it looked like he was for a while. But we do have Greg Hillsberg, project architect, Greg Gobel, director of design, and I believe Todd should be joining us at some point if he's not already on the call. So Todd Powers, vice president at ITNER. So we are basically at about the end of schematic design and we are going to go through where we are on each of the projects. We have more developed plans for the interiors of the buildings than we do site work at this point in time. And part of the reason for that is because we don't have a survey for the high school yet. We just recently got the final survey for the ECC and the elementary school. So there's going to be some things when we look at images of the exterior of the building that are a little weird, a little wonky, don't quite connect to the ground. Because honestly, we're not quite sure where the ground is at this point in time. So we are still gathering information. I'm gonna jump ahead in here. We're gonna look at the early childhood center first and then the elementary school. Those should be pretty quick. And then we'll dig into the middle school, high school updates and our floor plans again are coming pretty well-developed at this point in time. So we can look at each of the spaces that we're affecting in the middle school and the high school and get you guys up to date on those. And then at the end, we have a review of the task orders, task order three and four. Task order three is the elementary school scope and task order four is the ECC scope. And the reason for those task orders is, if you recall, I think when we got under contract in maybe January of 2019, we weren't sure what the scope was. And so your contract with ITNER only covered the middle school and the high school construction work because we knew that there would be work there. And so the ECC and the elementary school are just contracts to keep us working on the drawings for those buildings. So we've seen this graphic before and we are moving to the right. So we're done. Well, there's those couple of things with pre-design still out there, like the surveys. We're waiting for the geotech report on the soil condition at the high school. They've done the drilling and so we're anticipating that report any day now. But we've moved through most of schematic design and are about to move into design development, which is when we really get in detail on finishes, interiors, systems, structural, ceilings, lighting, things like that. So moving forward at a pretty good clip. Again, pre-designed at all buildings, field documentation is nearing completion. And there's always things that we've missed or that aren't quite working out when we get them into our 3D modeling program. So we keep showing up and you guys keep letting us in the building to look at other things that we need to investigate more thoroughly. Again, the surveys I've talked about already, middle school, high schools at about 95% completion. So we should have that again any day now. Geotech report any day now as well. So we met with the middle school and high school stakeholders a couple of times to talk about programming and then once to review the space plans. And once you guys are onboard and have this review opportunity tonight, we will plan to meet with them again in the next week or two and just show them kind of where everything is landing. And we're on track to complete schematic design in early September. The elementary and the ECC schematic design, we've met with the stakeholders at the elementary school and we're actually moving into looking at finishes. Had a plumbing walkthrough with our engineers there for the restroom scope. And then the ECC floor plans, we basically now have them at a point where we can review them with the stakeholders over there. And we are working on ongoing civil engineering coordination at both of the sites. Now that we have the surveys, our engineers are onsite walking through with Manny to understand better the drainage issues at all of those sites and figure out the best way to resolve those issues. And then the district is managing building envelope repairs like tuck pointing, roofing, window replacement, HVAC replacement. The boiler room abatement got wrapped up a couple of weeks ago and now the boilers are out as well, which is a game changer. It already looks like a completely different space. So that's really exciting that those are out of there already. Our next steps are to get a schematic design cost estimate. So we'll take our estimates that we have developed previously, get input from all of our consultants and just make sure that we're still on track. That's a rolling review. So we'll keep moving as the cost estimates are getting caught up to where we are. We will continue to meet with administration and staff in each of the buildings to look at where the designs are headed. Design development again is interior finishes, systems, so just the next level of design. We need to have a meeting with the building plan, the building inspector at Maplewood to review some code concerns that we've run into. So your building is really old, was not designed to current code standards. And so there's things that we encounter as we move through design that don't meet code and that we honestly have no way to resolve. For instance, your original building is not, it's fire-protected, but it's not structurally protected. And as a result, should not have been built as a four-story building if you were to build it today. Obviously, there's nothing we can do about that. So we just need to make sure that Maplewood is on the same page as we are as far as kind of dicing the building into fire sections so that they understand how we're adding on and how that's going to be addressed. And then we would like to have a preliminary review with the architectural review board and their October meeting, which means that we need to submit a preliminary package to them by the end of the month. I would anticipate that it's definitely not our only review. So we'll probably have to go and meet with them a couple of times as we work through things like not only the materials and the massing of the exterior of the building, but signage, exterior lighting, things like that. So our first touch point, we're hoping, will be at their October meeting. Alright, so we're gonna move into the early childhood center and I just want to have a brief scope review for each of the buildings. So we're going to look at the secure entry and the renovated office. Things that we're not really going to look at tonight, but we have in process are the loading dock, lift, wayfinding and safety signage, the site drainage, as I mentioned already, perimeter fencing. And we will look at the coiling doors in the piazza. We will plan to have a walkthrough with building administration and probably Manny in the next month or so to understand better the door hardware issues. And then we'll get our door hardware consultant up to speed and working on those. Shades at the interior and some exterior doors, security cameras. We've had low voltage and audiovisual meetings with our engineers and with the district already. We will have a security meeting, I believe, not next week, it's the week after, to talk more specifically about operation of doors, gates, things like that. We plan to alarm some of the exterior doors and then update to intercom and communications. And then the district is doing tuck pointing and replacing the roof over the gym. Let's see, I'm gonna skip ahead to the plans. Here we go. So we'll look at this area first. I have this I plan on here for reference if we need it, but I do want to zoom. Can I not zoom in? Let's see. Alright, so we've looked at this area before. But here is the office, the entry here with the storefront here, enclosing that opening as well. And then this piece of storefront which drives you into the office. So the main reception person is, will still be here and the attendance person will be here. The counselor's office, we're moving from this vicinity over to the outside wall. So we've measured the storefront, we want to know where the mullions are, ceiling, structure and coordination and things like that. So this is the footprint of the counselor's office. And then opening up this door in this corridor as a student entry and relocating the second reception person from the front of the office back to the student entry. So that's basically our scope in that area. The piazza, security that we've discussed. What we're proposing to do is to actually provide new column covers that are larger than the existing column covers on this line of structure. And we'll have tracks for the coiling doors set into them. So I know we had talked previously about is this one big door? Do we build out little pieces of wall off of these columns to handle the track for the coiling doors? And this seems like a really good solution. They'll actually be the same material as the existing column covers. They'll just be bigger and will allow us to to set the tracks for the coiling doors into there. So it will look as clean as possible, like it was intended to be there. Day-to-day, nothing will be noticeable, but in the case of an event or an emergency, these will close. And we've talked initially with our electrical engineer about how we tie that into security systems with panic buttons. So certain administration in the building, the receptionist can have a panic button that they can press and these doors come down. Now they'll have a sensor, so if there's kid in the way, they're not gonna hit the kid. But that's preliminarily the operation that we see on those doors. And then this door is a little bit simpler because we've got these wing walls already to attach the tracks to. So those will all be on the same type of system. So we're excited that that is coming out so cleanly. Let's see, zoom back out. Alright, the elementary school then. We've got restroom renovations to show you here in a minute. And then the reconfiguration of the admin suite, which pretty much worked out how we thought it was gonna work out, but we'll show you that as well. Railings and finishes at the kiva, we have a couple of ideas for that, that we're going to run past the administration to see what their thoughts are. One idea, we've talked previously about just having kind of a simple railing that gives people a visual cue that there's a change in floor height there and beware. But we are looking at ways to kind of tie that into the metaphor as well as into, you know, the design of the space in general. And so one thought is that they're actually kind of a counter, like a leaning space so that kids can stand around the kiva. Kids that don't want to sit in the kiva necessarily can kind of stand and perch around it. Another one is just giving it some graphic interest. So images that we could kind of have cut out of material in the railing. So we're thinking about a couple of different ideas there. We have perimeter fencing, the mulch field drainage, which our intention is to replace it with sod once the drainage issues are resolved and there will be an underfield drainage, a drainage field under the surface. So it should take care of all of that water that pools up in there and allow grass to grow, which I think would be everybody's preference for that space. And then we have the new playground at the elementary school. Some door hardware issues, the door shades similar to the ECC, providing more security cameras, intercom and communication improvements. And then the cafeteria door replacement, the discovery club door with the intercom that will notify both the discovery club office as well as the main office. Something I didn't mention at the ECC, but that we are working on for each of the buildings, each of the campuses, is to change the address to actually what is the main entry or what will be the main entry in some cases. And then by the district is tuck pointing, roof replacement, window replacement, restoring the skylight in the library. RTU replacement and controls, parking lot drainage, and then curb and pavement repairs. And I will jump down to these plans. So one thing that we discovered when we started looking at your elementary school is that it in no way meets current plumbing codes. So if the building were designed today under the current St. Louis County Building Code, you're short on fixtures. So we were intending to create the gender-neutral restrooms by opening up these entries and doing that by actually moving this wall back into the restroom and losing a fixture in each one. Now, our goal instead has become to not make the situation worse. So we don't want to remove plumbing fixtures. We likely will not run into any problems with, in this case, Richmond Heights or St. Louis County, who does the plumbing review for Richmond Heights. If we're not making the situation worse, I think it would be a hard sell to say that we were coming in and removing fixtures. So in order to do that, we aren't removing fixtures, we're removing urinals and replacing them with regular, with commotes. And we're still able to open up these entries by getting a kind of a narrower sink that sits against this wall. We also then are trying not to make the sink situation worse. So like with the toilet fixtures, you're short on sinks based on today's plumbing code. So since we are taking them off of the insides of the walls and putting them in an area that is more easily supervisable, we have to up our counts. So we're doing that by locating some inside this alcove in the restroom and then some in the corridors. Similar to at the ECC, how there's just sinks in the corridors at the ECC every once in a while. We're also putting a couple in the vestibule. And not only does that get us to the counts that we need as far as sinks, but we think that that will be really helpful moving forward with whatever happens with coronavirus. It gives everybody coming in the building a place to stop and wash their hands. So if kids are coming in from recess, visitors, whoever it is that is coming in through this main entry door has a place to stop and wash their hands. These are the wavy sinks that you all have in other locations throughout the district. This one will be a little nicer. We've got some prettier-looking sinks that we are gonna propose for this area here. So it won't be, you know, the kid sink. It'll be a little nicer sink. And we can still provide some building signage, a place for tack boards and display above the sinks in the vestibule. So we think that that's going to work out pretty well. And then we are relocating the water fountains, which used to be here on these walls, into a more accessible place in the corridor. And we still need to check with the code, but it seems like the direction that the school would like to go is to have more bottle fillers necessarily than water fountains. And so if we can, we may just provide a water fountain with a bottle filler and then another bottle filler. You can get bottle fillers that are like a unit that recesses into the wall. That way, nobody has to wait to fill a bottle. You can get a drink of water, you can fill a bottle at two locations. And it seems like especially moving forward in this climate, people are gonna get really used to filling and carrying bottles. And this will give them more locations to be able to do that. Alright, so here's our new secure vestibule. And this is the east side of the building. So this is the glade entry. And instead of just being able to come right inside of the building and into the lobby, visitors are required to go into the office area. We've got some nice, we'll have some nice waiting lounge furniture in this front area. A desk for the receptionist as well as an attendance desk and then a back entry that takes you out into the rest of the building. We've got a workroom that basically, as well as we could, replicates the existing workroom, which seems pretty successful. So we have a lot of counter space and upper cabinets here, mailboxes, tall storage cabinets, and then space for the copier. We've got one, five, six offices. And then these two new interventionist spaces, that is what we're gaining out of this suite that enters off of the library area. And then here we've got a new nurses' suite. So one of our goals obviously was to get it off of the second floor and closer to the front door. But also, we are including in each of the nurses' suites that we're affecting. So here and at the middle school, high school, an isolation room. So that's a place where you can kids that need to get picked up quickly. And then also installing a shower. And they've requested a shower in this nurses' suite. So we'll have two cot spaces out in the open exam area with curtains, some storage, workspace for the nurse, and then an isolation room. And then we will open up, currently this is office space in the faculty lounge. And the faculty lounge goes to about here. So we're gonna open that up and give the faculty back the access to this outdoor patio area that they had when that was their library. I'm gonna jump upstairs. So similar layout with the restrooms here, three sinks against this wall and then two out in the corridor, similar with the water fountains as well. And then this is the space that used to be the nurses' office. So we are opening up a door into the corridor, closing the door that used to be right here. And this will be a staff conference room with a staff restroom and then a quiet room, which can also be used as a new mother's room. So this is the new classroom that we're gaining and then two office spaces that open into the atrium. Any questions about the ECC or the elementary? Now we'll jump into.
I do have a question, Julie, about the water bottle fillers or that area. With COVID, I noticed that a lot of places where you would fill your own cups, soda, water, whatever, they've removed those. Is there something that we're doing to make sure that that is something safe in the middle of COVID?
Now, my understanding is that the water fountain feature has been removed. So you don't want people touching and putting their faces near the water fountain. But I don't know that there is as much concern about the bottle fillers themselves. I think that there was a desire over the summer, and I don't know how much of this got done, but to retrofit the water fountains with bottle fillers so that those could be used by students whenever you all are prepared to reoccupy the buildings. So I think that's at least significantly better than having a bunch of little kids put their faces on the water fountains.
Okay, I was just curious as to if there was anything that the CDC or the health department has recommended with that. Just because I had noticed like a quick trip, you can't get a fountain drink anymore, things like that.
Well, you have to provide water to the students in some way. And so short of giving everybody, you know, several bottles of water every day, this is really the best way to do it. We can take a look and see if there are recommendations. But this is what our understanding of the best practice moving forward.
One thing to keep in mind about the bottle fillers too, this is Todd. Obviously, the best way, most of them are largely contactless. In other words, you can hold the bottle and it has a sensor. And essentially, you hold the bottle, the water fills into the bottle. And as long as you don't touch the surrounding area, many of them are designed, you know, to essentially be contactless. And they have been for some time. So that's one of the things we'll want to make sure is that they have the little sensor eye in them. It also helps, many of them have an auto shut-off feature too, so that, you know, you don't overfill and end up wasting water. So we'll definitely take a look and make sure that we're getting the most contact-less, you know, versions that we can.
Thank you.
And we'll get to set the precedent kind of on your water fountains and bottle fillers moving forward. So we'll have, we'll bring up our options to you all. We can look at them at a later date. And then everywhere that we are providing new water fountains or bottle fillers, we'll be able to implement the same thing.
I had a question on the drainage feature at the elementary school. What kind of materials are going to be used to construct it? And what sort of durability will they have? Has there been any thought to that?
I can't answer that, but I can for you next time that we talk.
Okay, great.
Our civil engineer just walked the site with Manny at the ECC a couple of days ago. And I think he's due to go to the elementary school, if not tomorrow, then Monday. So he's getting moving on that. And he likely has a standard on what he specifies, but I don't know what it is right now. But we'll make sure that we know for the next time we talk.
Thank you.
Yep. Unless Todd, you have any insight? I don't know right now.
Well, I will rely on the civil engineer, but I will say generally when you're talking about a field like this, you're gonna be dealing with a French or a trench, however, a lot of people, different kind of interchangeable. I think it's technically a French drain system where they would put a series of PVC perforated pipes underground, you know, not too far below the surface, surrounded with some granular material and some long, you know, some quality geo-textile fabric. So you've probably seen many of these. They're kind of like a foundation drainage system. But in this case, we're taking that water that's kind of settling. And once it goes in through the grass, goes down through an inch or a few inches of soil material, then it has this sort of regular, almost a grid, if you will, of collection material. Then it has this sort of regular, um, almost a grid, if you will, of collection material. And that way, when you do get these large rains and the water can't migrate off. It can settle in and then be piped away much more quickly. So, um, you may still see some very short-term ponding in situations like that. But the, but the beauty of these systems is it doesn't stick around long enough to kill the vegetation. It's just there during the rain event and once it stops raining, everything quickly goes into one of these systems and, and essentially leaves the area. So, but I will say that I agree with Julie. We do need to talk with, uh, Paul, uh, with CDC and, um. See what he has in mind because there are other innovations out there that we could look at.
Um, our hope is that at the ECC, the ponding, um, the ponding in the playgrounds, uh, on the north and east of the building. Is a more, um, localized situation and that we can resolve that with area drains and regrading where necessary. But mulch field just gets so much water and it just all collects in that, uh, flat spot at the bottom of the hill. So it's.
Right.
Not going to be resolved anyway, short of subsurface drainage.
Right. Playgrounds and mulch areas are actually easier to deal with because water travels very quickly through a mulch field. Grass areas are harder because obviously, you know, dirt and grass don't let water perm, you know, they don't. They don't, they don't, they don't percolate as well. So you'll get a tendency to build up more water essentially in a grass area. So we, we will likely need to resort to the same style of system. But generally under a mulch, uh, playfield or any kind of play, uh, playground, whatever the, regardless of the surface. We're going to have essentially a network of perforated pipes underneath. That can collect all that water and, you know, get it out of the area so that we don't, um. So we don't have this ponding issue. That's, that's really the only way to, I mean, you only have two ways to solve it. You either have to figure out a way to regrade and push the water somewhere else, which essentially is just displacing your problem. You know, you might not have ponding where you had it, but you probably have it somewhere else now. The more permanent solution is to put in an under drain, an underground subsurface drainage system and get that water away. It turned into the storm system.
Any other questions before we move on to the middle school and high school? I didn't see them before. Alright, um, so we're going to show you plans for the addition, the main, the big addition at the high school. Um, we are going to show you the renovated locker rooms, existing locker rooms off of your existing gym and the gym lobby renovations. Uh, as I mentioned already, we don't have a lot of information on the site right now. So we won't have a detailed site plan to share with you at this point in time. We have kind of a, a schematic one. We, uh, are starting to look at the fencing and the canopy that secures the courtyard. And how we connect the additions across the front of the building. The cooling tower will be replaced. We are not sure yet because we don't have the survey exactly where it's going. It will be on the west side of the building, but not, it, it has not settled into a location yet. Uh, we do have the cafeteria to look at, um, the third serving line. Boiler room renovations with restrooms, teen kitchen, the receiving area, the docklift and the wow storage. And then general cafeteria finish updates. We won't have finishes for you tonight, but we will get to those in the next several weeks. Um, we have a layout for the alternative program that's moving into your existing library space. The new middle school office is moving into the central office with a new vestibule entry there. The student services, existing student service area turns into three new classrooms. The middle school office turns into a new classroom and a new, um, staff space. Uh, we have renovations to the choir and the wrestling area to show you. And then a couple of additional classrooms in the central office and the library. Restrooms are going to be all new. Plumbing is going to be completely replaced in the existing stacked restrooms. Uh, and then we'll also change the address to the Lomir side of the building. The district is replacing windows, restoring the roof. If you've been out there anytime recently, you've probably seen the cranes for the tuck pointing. Uh, and then the RT replacement and the new controls. So I'm going to jump ahead to, here we go. Alright, we're going to start on the lower level. So this is the basement, um, in this area. So below grade, uh, the track is out here. And this is the cafeteria, this pink space here. So I think I have to, uh, make it smaller so I can zoom in, but we will need to do that. Alright, we're going to start in the lower level of the addition, which if you all remember, uh, is also where the storm shelter is located. So this piece here that I'm outlining right now is the storm shelter. So we are required to have, uh, access to a place to use the restroom within the storm shelter. And so this locker room here will provide that and be within the outline of the storm shelter. Uh, so we've got weight room here, uh, with a water fountain, windows into wrestling space. So the wrestling space will have a clear floor space for a full-size mat. So no columns located, um, in the wrestling room. Uh, we need a sprinkler entry over here in the weight room. So we're starting to get the like electrical closets, um, data closets, water sprinkler, mechanical spaces. We're starting to identify those needs and to locate those, um, within our plans. Uh, so we have some shared storage between weights and wrestling. Uh, the locker rooms, I think Greg Hillsberg may be able to speak to the number of the lockers. But these I believe are, um, intended for athletics. And then the locker rooms upstairs adjacent to the main gym will be used for day-to-day for PE. Um, so we've got three toilets here, two showers, three sinks in each of these, um, locker rooms. We are not installing urinals anywhere that we're working. So you will be able to sign these restrooms in any way that you want, um, either side. I think in, uh, shower situations, you, you want to have one designated, um, for girls and one for boys. But you can do either one. You can change them. So if you have a tournament, um, and need. More of one, um, type, you can change those up. They're basically identical. We have a big athletics.
I was just going to say that the, uh, the locker rooms are sized based on the largest, um, athletic program. So we'll have a combination of lockers at the lower level here, which is considered the athletic locker rooms. Um, there'll be larger, um, athletic lockers. They'll be two foot wide, uh, eighteen inch deep. Uh, and then there'll be some, uh, double height, standard size lockers as well. Um, and then the PE is sized for the, uh, number of classes as well. This will be double height units in the PE locker rooms.
So we have a big athletic storage space, um, in the lower level. And we'll, um, we'll have ongoing conversations, uh, with the athletic department about how to divvy that up between the different sports. These are, uh, the health classrooms. And we'll have a movable partition in the middle of these classrooms so that it can be opened up into one large space. And used for, um, cardio, uh, exercise, yoga, that kind of thing. It's a pretty good sized classroom in that configuration. Uh, the trainer has a space here and then the coach's office, um, here. This is the stair that will be the main approach from the main level. So we've widened this corridor to make it more of a, a space, uh, and then provided some benches. So kids can hang out here before wrestling practice, before going to weight room, before talking to the coaches or before, uh, classes in the health room. Move to the cafeteria. Um, so we've got the new cafeteria addition out here. Basically taking, uh, the extruding out the, the old addition. To capture this additional space here. Again, we don't have the survey, so we don't know exactly how this is sitting in the ground. We think that by the time we get out to this southernmost face, we'll basically be at grade level. And we should be able to allow, um, access directly out, uh, more or less at track level or a sidewalk that's a little bit above track.
Above track level.
It'll be above track level?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then this will still be a way to get out the side and be at the top of the bleacher level. So we'll still have access to the same level that the door currently goes out. Um, we are actually ending up with, uh, three multipurpose conference spaces. So we'll have a lot of glass in these, possibly some piece, um, operables so that we can open them up. To the, the larger dining area. And then our hope and our thought was that. The drawings that we had seemed to indicate that there was actually steel in these big pieces of masonry here. Um, it turns out that that was also apparently a hope in a previous, uh, round of construction. And so the design was done to, um, tear out a lot of this masonry. At the back of the original building and replace it with thinner steel columns. Our hope is to also do that, at least at this location. But we just, we have just found this out in the last couple of days and so need to engage our structural engineer a little bit more. I imagine it probably didn't happen the last time around because of cost. Um, so we want to understand exactly what, uh, will be involved in removing some of this masonry here. At a minimum, we will encase it so it won't be as visually busy as it is, um, right now in this, in this higher space out here.
Yeah, yeah. Our hope is even if we can't get rid of all of those, uh, pilasters, that maybe we can eliminate the one in the middle to open up the, the cafeteria to the new addition. Um, and then we're still in the, Julie had mentioned that, uh, we're, we're still getting everything together. We want to sit down with the stadium review, uh, code, our, our code interpretation, uh, and get them on board. And so we're going to take a look at this level as well. Um, there's that exit that goes to the west there that kind of bisects the two conference spaces. So if, if at all possible, if we don't need that, we might, uh, get rid of that and increase, um, the, the conference spaces or the, the multipurpose spaces within the cafeteria.
It's basically going to depend on if we need to look at from the line of the previous addition out as a separate building. Because if so, we will likely then need this as a route out of this building. If not, then maybe we can make sure that our travel distances work and use these as exits instead. In which case we can have a little, um, better layout to these conference rooms without having this, uh, exit. That's the existing red door on the west side of the building. But we are opening up this piece of wall right here. So when you come in a new entry here, uh, you'll be able to move, um, into the serving line area. Straight into the cafeteria or down into the, the addition space. We've got a preliminary layout for a third serving line here. We'll need to look at how, um. How to secure that because right now there's a coiling door here, um, and some soffit things that happen in this area that we haven't quite figured out yet. So. And then we also are having, um. Our kitchen consultant, uh, provide a new, uh. Cooler back here, a good sized cooler and then a small freezer as well, which should take care of all of the. Central food storage, uh, for the district because it all comes into this location. So we've got restrooms here and again, gender neutral restrooms with shared sinks out in an area that is easily supervisable. Uh, at the elementary school, um, oh, sorry, at the middle school, high school, these will be solid partitions, solid doors, uh, separate individual spaces. At the elementary school, I did not mention this before and I should have, but, um. We, because we can't lose any fixtures in that space, we're not able to build actual partitions. Instead, we will need to provide new toilet partitions that are taller. Um, so they're closer to the ground, they're taller to the ceiling and then the gaps are much smaller, much tighter than standard toilet partitions. Just because we don't have the space to give up five inches, um, between each toilet and not lose fixtures. So it will still provide privacy as well as a little bit, um, of supervision still because you'll be able to see. Feet under the door, but you won't be able to look over the top. You won't be able to look through the cracks. You won't be able to look under the bar. However, here at the middle school and high school, these will be solid partitions and solid doors. So we've got a preliminary layout for the teen kitchen that we're just kind of working through now. Um, with four different, uh, cooking stations. So cooktops here, here, sinks. Refrigerators and then a monitor along this back wall. We are, um, working through kind of how this functions and where, um. There is some talk of providing a video camera that could project whatever was happening on a, um. On the teaching, uh, kitchen area to a monitor. So we've got a space for a monitor here, some tall storage. Uh, and then providing some flexibility and how the center of the space works. So if you've got a whole pile of kids in here and you want to show them one thing. Um, we see these as being movable tables or counters that can kind of tuck under these other island spaces. Um, but then when you've got the kids split up into groups, um, you can have one cooking, one cleaning, propping. Um, and then wall ovens, stacked wall ovens on either side. So basically four, uh, separate cooking stations. Um, so that an entire group can use the space at one time. Uh, we've got the wow staging area here, um, with shelving and cabinets on this wall. And then this is the ramp down into the existing boiler room, uh, which is, will become receiving. Um, we likely are going to try to relocate the piece, the, the. Building, the stuff inside of the building structure under the cooling tower, um, is the boiler equipment. Trying to relocate that to the interior of the building. It will help to bring down the massing of the cooling tower. So the cooling tower will be able to appear smaller. And so this seems like a good location to put it inside of the building. Uh, this is all your, your sprinkler, um, will likely have some electrical in this area as well. And then hopefully we'll be able to get in some, um, wow overflow storage. So if they have a lot of food coming in, um, that fills their wow staging space, they can have some overflow sport, storage in the vicinity as well. Currently that happens on the other side of the building, uh, over here. And, um, there are some maintenance, uh, supplies in the existing boiler room. So our hope is to swap them, put the maintenance supplies over where the wow storage, storage currently is. And the wow storage over by wow staging. So that, um, seems to make sense. Let's see. So these are the three new classrooms that we are gaining where student services used to be. So these will be high school classrooms. The high school classrooms are in green and the middle school classrooms are in blue. Um, and I don't recall off the top of my head exactly the counts, but basically we have three more classrooms than. Have been requested. So we have, we not only have accounted for anticipated future growth, but we have three extra classrooms as well. Anything else? Sorry Greg, we've got the new, the restroom layouts here. They're more or less going in, uh. Back the way that they were, but again, the plumbing, the piping, the fixtures, everything will be updated in there.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of working that through. Um, our engineer needs to kind, kind of take a closer look at that. Uh, because in some instances, the way that the, the toilet rooms are laid out, um, isn't really conducive. It doesn't make sense for the new layouts. Just based upon the fact that, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we're providing appropriate size stalls, especially for ADA. Um, and currently some of them are a little bit smaller. So we might have to relocate some of the, the toilets that are on one wall to a new wall. And so we just need to explore what the possibilities that are plumbing wise. So.
So the next area we're going to look at is the existing, um, sage and BDE spaces as well as the existing choir and wrestling room. Uh, so what that will be in the future, because we are relocating sage and BDE to the existing library. Is a larger choir space and we've moved the choir space east. Because there are sound issues with having it adjacent to the band room. So we can get a much bigger footprint here and also completely separate it from the band room. So you can have both classes going on at one time without conflict. The middle space then, basically the existing choir room, uh, is going to turn into a flex classroom. One of the things we've heard is the need for a, uh, tech, uh, um, theater tech space. Uh, so kind of a messy classroom project space. As well as a flex classroom for both band and choir. So if, uh, band needs a space for an ensemble to play, uh, they can go in here. If choir needs, um, you know, a certain subset of the choir to have a place to practice for that class period. They can use this flex classroom as well. So, uh, kind of a fine arts, multipurpose flex classroom. Uh, we have some fine arts, uh, some theater and music storage down here. We have some fine arts, some theater and music storage down here. We're going to keep one of these existing restrooms and then provide another. Here, there is plumbing in this vicinity already, but will we configure and get it up to standard codes? And then three practice spaces for band and music. Right, I'm going to move up a level. And we'll start over here again. So this is the new, basically the high school entry. And the middle school entry is over here. So this is the existing central office, existing libraries in this box. And everything from this line north is new. So we've got student services at this new high school entry. And then the new gym here. Bleachers along the south wall, we'll put the climbing wall somewhere along this facade. And then get some windows in as well as a whole pile of skylights. So that a lot of the time, this gym space can operate without actually turning on the artificial lighting. So inside of the new entry, we have both of these entries opening to the side and will be connected with a canopy. And so this is the new secure vestibule, so visitors will be directed into this reception area. Students and staff and everybody else can come through these doors and into this corridor. This is the stair down to the lower level as well as up to the library. And then the corridor to the gym. We'll have a kind of history wall of fame piece of display along this wall here. So once inside of student services, we have enough space in this reception area for two desks. And there's ongoing conversation about who, who is manning this door. If it is the person who's currently kind of in the outer area of student services now, only one desk is needed. If it's an additional person that is hired basically just to man the door, we'll need two desk spaces. But we have adequate room in here to do that as well as space for seating and tables and things like that. Student Services Director Office, Career Counselor Office, Social Worker, Data Coordinator, and a small conference room here. And then we've got five counselors down the side and the SSD coordinator. And then a good sized conference room in the middle of the suite, couple of staff restrooms, kitchen, kitchenette area, and then a workroom with a copier. And then the new nurses suite, so it's close to the door, but has a back entrance for students coming in from other parts of the building. Isolation room and then an open exam area with two more cots. Waiting area, an office for the nurse, and then a restroom with a shower. We've got the elevator in this corner on each floor. And one thing about this stair is from the basement level up, it's required to be an enclosed stair, it's a means of egress out of the basement. And so it will appear, it will, it will be a closed stair, you'll have to go into a door to get to it. From this level up to the library, it's not required to be enclosed. So this can be a nice, open, welcoming stair that takes you up to the library. And so we've got a lot of glass along this north facade looking out into the parking area and then along the east facade looking out into the courtyard. So you come through a set, this is basically a fire rated vestibule that addresses egress concerns that we have from, from these two buildings butting up against each other. And then this is your existing gym lobby. So we lobbed off the little piece that kind of protrudes under the overhang out into the courtyard. Because if you recall now, there are stairs out of the gym that come down into the gym lobby and then stairs from the main corridor that go down into the gym lobby. So the gym lobby is a half level off of the rest of everything else in this vicinity. We're going to fill in, we're going to build up the floor so that this is all at the same level coming through here. But that little piece that butts out into the courtyard with the windows and the trophy case does not have the height to allow us to do that. So we would be significantly rebuilding it and it doesn't really get us anything plan wise. So we're going to take that off. But this is the rest of the gym lobby with the floor built up. So we've got a big bank of public restrooms here, janitor's closet, and then relocated the concessions, but we wanted there to be some visibility out into the courtyard as well as some light into this space. So you've got a window here next to the concession stand. And then this is the new entry into the gym space. So if you recall, when we looked at this in the winter and then in the fall, our hope was to be able to get a great, big generous opening in this vicinity and relocate this stair to the addition. Well, it turns out that the mezzanine at your existing gym is actually, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's like seven feet off of the floor level that we were hoping to achieve at the second floor up here. So there was a way that we were going to be able to make that work without taking up a whole lot of floor space for ramps and stairs and things that just didn't seem reasonable. So we're leaving the stairs to the mezzanine in place, but we are opening up a new entry from this gym lobby, basically at the, at the bottom of the stairs. That allows us, this is the existing opening into the gym, that allows us to get some storage, a nice changing room and shower area for refs for games, and then renovate these PE lockers, locker space, and then stalls and sinks in here. We are also removing the shower area in the PE office back here. So it's still going to be a PE office, but without the shower stall. And that's going to allow us to remove a pile of the piping that's currently in the cafeteria ceiling. That's, as the, to the best of our knowledge and we've investigated, is the only thing that all of that piping is feeding is this restroom right here. It seems like there used to be other locker rooms in this vicinity that aren't there anymore. So pulling out this restroom here will allow us to really clean up the ceiling and the cafeteria, which will be a great, a great help. And let's see. So then over at the middle school entry, we've got the new vestibule here coming into this entry. So here's the secure way into the middle school vestibule. Visitors will have to come in this way and then everybody else can come through here. So we've got a generous reception area for the middle school. And we'll probably have some soft lounge-like seating welcoming area right here. Middle school principal conference, a small conference room that my understanding is, at least in the short term, is going to be another counselor space. But I may not be understanding that completely correctly anyway. And then the assistant principal's office space here, a big generous conference room. They said they frequently have a need for conferences for like 12 to 14 people. So we'll have a large conference room there, kitchenette, workroom. We wanted to move the SRO closer to A door. And the middle school was happy to have him in their vicinity. So we're going to pull him out of the high school office where he currently is and give him new office space here. And then we have a staff restroom and then another new mother's room here. And so the rest of the central office suite, we're going to pull out the storefront that's in Dr. Hall's office currently, that kind of antiquated looking mirrored glazing that faces the parking lot here and replace it with something a little more up to date and also not mirrored. And then we've got three good sized new classrooms. So these are almost as big as the existing math classrooms. So the intention is that these then are all middle school classrooms. And I'll show you how we trade off with the high school when we get up there in a minute. So over here in the alternative services area, we've got an entrance along the back of what is currently the library as well as keeping the, the piece of the entry into the existing library. So from that direction, there will be a lobby space with cubbies and student locker space along here. And then Sage and BDE are over here so that students can come down from other parts of the building and go to BDE without going through any other student spaces down here. Offices and therapy rooms kind of interchangeable throughout. So somebody can be using this office space to talk to a student or whatever and still have visual access to BDE and Sage. The BD room, I think, is like two and a half times what you currently have. Sage is almost twice as big as the current Sage area. We have three individual student restrooms here. We're going to keep the IDF roof access that's here and also the kitchenette that's the back of the library. And then the rest of this is for SSC and Missouri options. So we've got replicating the, the three SSC classrooms that are currently in the house across the street. And then this is a future fourth classroom. But in the meantime, it's basically going to be used for gatherings. So kind of like they use their living room where they get breakfast in the morning and get together every morning. So either these walls will be open and in the future, when this is needed as a fourth classroom, these walls can be built and enclosed. Or we could look at an operable solution for these, basically this line right here and right here, to be able to close that down if it's needed more in the short term. Large conference space and then a staff room where staff can go to, to do quiet work, take phone calls, et cetera.
Julie, a question about the ceiling in that space. You're probably going to talk about it.
Greg's got ideas. Greg, do you want to talk?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. What we think is that there are a number of things we can add into that space that will, will buffer the variable heights in there. What we don't want to do is just drop a ceiling in across that and have all that unused space above it. We think that we drop little object things on some of the rooms to make them more acoustically isolated. And some of them are taller to allow that volume to work and for the daylight to move around in the space. And also for some of that stuff to telegraph out through the windows to the street. So it's a, it's a challenge that's a visual three dimensional thing. And we're going to look at it carefully and then show you some of the solutions we come up with. What we don't want to do is just lay a ceiling in there. And what's not obvious about that is that when you put an acoustic ceiling in, you have to suspend it from something. And it winds up being sort of a visual rat nest of wires and stuff that doesn't look good in any way. So the answer is it's complicated, but we have some ideas and we think we can do something nice there.
We understand that the priorities in this space are acoustic separation and daylighting. So we're going to take, what you're not seeing here are those big arched windows that are above where this plan is cut visually. But we're going to take every advantage that we can of those. We are going to cut in two new windows into these classrooms that don't have windows other ways. And then because these windows are so high and these spaces are so tall, we can put in clear story windows along walls like this that will allow light to go farther into the space. But still provide an enclosed room with acoustic separation.
Short and most important takeaway is we're not going to drop a ceiling across all those things.
But we're definitely looking at ways to, to bring the scale down and to make it a cozy space. One of the great things about your library now is just the light, it's just, it just feels really comfortable. So we, we expect to still be able to maintain that, but also provide cozier and acoustically separated spaces. All right, I'm going to move upstairs. So this is for R and then the third floor in here. We don't have significant changes in these areas or these areas, but we will look at the new library. And so we've got this, the stair that's open to the corridor below. We're going to visually separate it from the rest of the library with a glass partition here, which will block sound from the lobby and gym space below from coming upstairs. One of our concerns was when you have board meetings, you don't want to hear basketballs bouncing in the gym below. So there will be, it will still appear open, but we'll have a line of glass along here. So come up the stair, this is the stair that's basically buried in student services. So it's, it's really just for egress and nobody's going to be arriving in this stairs. So big picture, we've got three different zones to the library. We have a classroom office zone up here, we have this big multipurpose zone in the middle, and then we've got the stacks along the back. So the classrooms are the PDL, so we're going to relocate the, the professional development library up here. We've got casework space for twenty four, yeah, twenty four people at least in here. And it will be a dedicated professional development library space. And then this room over here is going to be a project classroom basically. So if teachers have a group that they want to get out of their classroom, need to do something different, have a long-term project, kind of a messier type of space where they can do bigger things that kind of take more than a class period. That's what we see this space acting as. So likely no, you know, big saws or power tools or anything like that. But we can definitely look at providing space for three printers, flexible power and furniture in this space. So it can be used just by whoever needs a project space. Reception or the, the library desk here, office, workroom, and then library storage back here. And then this big open space, we are looking at different furniture ideas for this area. But one thing that we heard was that the librarian really wanted kind of nooks, reading nooks, spaces that were built in that were comfortable for kids to, to take a book and read, small group spaces. She wanted some kind of gaming area. And then at least space for an entire, another class to meet in the library area besides in this enclosed maker project classroom. And so what we've done here is to carve up this west wall into kind of small gathering spaces for groups. These are portholes that look out down into the gym and kind of built in nooks, if you will, in here for kids to sit and take a book. And then this is a console for a large screen. And we are looking at furniture solutions, we're providing a gaming area here that also can be moved for when you have bigger events. So board meetings, we envision happening in this space with a presentation wall here. And Greg, do you want to talk about furniture for that at this point?
Sure. There's a couple of things. The envelope of the box we have is a set thing and, and it's hard to make it bigger. And so we're under a little bit of pressure on some of the things that we need to put in there, one of which is furniture for the board to meet with. And so our strategy that we've talked about, but not adopted, because we need you to say that sounds like a reasonable thing, is to buy decent furniture tables that can be moved around and used in various ways in the space, including for your needs. And so instead of then having to garage those tables when they're not in use, we can put them to work in other places in the library in the in-between time. And there are a lot of attractive solutions that use those kinds of things now. We'll show you options and let you pick the ones that work best for you. And it, it prevents us from carving up some more of the library space into a storeroom for those tables. I'd also like to talk briefly about that wall that Julie just talked about with the portholes on it into the gym. That, that whole margin of the room is something that it won't read very well in the plan in terms of what it means. But it's actually a series of nice little spaces that kids can sort of retreat into while still in view of, of the circulation desk. And so it's a little breakout area where people can collect in smaller groups and take advantage of resources in those areas and still be part of the main library. It's, it's a feature that's not obvious. And then the dash line in the middle of the space in addition is a daylighting component that's going to be in the roof above. So we'll pull some daylight into the middle of the space. And I, I see it working as a little bit of a lantern. So at nighttime, when things are going on in the library, it'll be lit up. And that'll be something that the neighbors that are a little bit distant from the building will be able to see as sort of a light device on top of the building and make it interesting as well. Creates a little bit more volume in the space additionally.
Our goal is to reuse the existing shelving. So all of this shelving in the middle is the existing lower shelving, which provides visibility over the top of it. And then we'll put the the wall shelving along the walls where we can. And then have a single restroom up here as well, so that when you've got board meetings, somebody doesn't have to go downstairs to use the restroom.
Just to be clear, Julie, yes, we're going to we're going to aim to use all the existing shelving. But the the low shelving that's shown in the middle, it's actually additional to what you currently have, because the librarian had need for additional book space. So it's accommodating what is currently in the library plus some additional shelves.
The stuff that happens in that little west area, those will be things that we're going to be made that will have made to support those ideas. So they won't be the reused stuff. They'll be casework and sitting areas that we create for that purpose.
But we think this is kind of fun. So up from the in the library, people can look down and see practice taking place in the gym. We wanted to minimize the amount of glazing here while still providing visibility, because anywhere you have glass, your sound separation is a little bit compromised. So upstairs on the fourth floor. So this is where the middle school office currently is. And then the assistant principal's office is here. So we're swapping the smaller conference area with the larger space. This will be a classroom that will allow us to get some plumbing into this conference space here. I think this is actually going to be a future staff lounge. The idea on this floor is to use this door that's currently there as a separation between middle school and high school. So one of our goals is to look at separating traffic and creating more of a micro school environment for the middle school. So this will be the line of demarcation. And so we've given these classrooms to the high school with easy access up the stair from the classroom, from the high school classroom level below. And in return, the middle school has gotten the math classrooms that work in conjunction with the three new classrooms that we're carving out of the central office in the library area. Staff toilet up there with a big request. And since we're redoing all the plumbing, should not be an issue to get another one in there. This conference space, as I said already. And then this is a currently a counselor's office that we will be opening up for another staff conference space as well. All right. Greg or Greg, do you guys want to talk about the site plan?
I think I'll dive in here. We had previously shown, and I'm going to try and share my screen here for a second to show you.
I think if I we stop.
Okay, well, I'm. Okay, can everybody see this now? Is the model visible to y'all?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the original layout we had done to sort of look how all these pieces fit together. And one of the assumptions that we had made was that at the time when we first started, there was a discussion about being able to perhaps use some of the real estate that was in this zone. And we stretched the road out and aligned it there. And I'm going to switch to another format now. You can you see this model now?
Not yet.
You see Google Earth?
No.
Okay, let me.
You might have to stop and share again.
Okay, I'm going to stop, share and go back to that. Here it comes. So the situation we have is that in the existing condition, there's a series of parking spaces along this edge. And we had originally thought we were going to push straight through here and align the road and then lose those parking spaces. And I know there's some sensitivity to the loss of the parking spaces. The issue that we have, though, is that without taking those parking spaces away, we wind up walking out of the building almost into traffic. And obviously, for a middle school and high school entry, there's groups getting together and talking and socializing while they're doing that. And having them trying to do that in a narrow margin between the building and the drive lane seems risky at best. So I'm going to switch back to the other model. So the dilemma we have is in order to create some volume like this, the cursor that I'm showing you is a plaza space that is that social space I'm talking about. In order to create that, we have to do one of a couple of things. The first is we either have to eliminate the parking and move it someplace else, or we have to drive that courtyard space that I'm talking about into the quad or into the space beyond. So that white box that's being reflected in there is an extension of the ground plane into the volume that is currently where the quad is. And at this point, there's a couple of retaining walls there that step down to the lower level. So we either have to create that safe space here or we have to drive it into the courtyard space. And it's really up to you guys to help us determine how you want us to go about doing that. We've already changed the entries to both the middle school and high school from frontal. The original entries worked here frontally on both sides. We've switched the entry to the side so that they're not being bumped right into the zone. They're being bumped sideways into that space. And that can be made to work. And the the solution which drives all these things into part of the courtyard can be made to work. The only thing worth considering is that phase two of this project is a connecting piece of building between the two of them. And so whatever energy we spend building this stuff here in five years or eight, whenever you decide to do this, we're then going to have to rework again. And and spending that money twice if we don't consider it carefully seems amiss. So we're we're hoping for some help. I know there's potentially a conversation that's going to happen with the city about what options we have relative to through circulation in front. But we can solve that. What I'm talking about, we can solve independently of the city's input if you give us the direction you want us to go. Questions? Anything I haven't explained clearly enough?
Greg, since you have control, do you want to keep it? Or do you want me to go back to the the still images in here?
Well, I have the original Lumion model running too. And it might make sense just briefly to show that. Let me try to do that. This is the last visual that we had given you regarding how that worked. And there was a canopy across there and a glassy entry into both of the buildings, obviously on either end. And then we were accessing the courtyard space via a stair there that would have connected the dots to the lower level. So what I'm describing now is that if I can't, by virtue of taking the parking along this edge away to give us the breathing room here, I have to go the opposite direction with it. And that can be made to work, although it will make the courtyard smaller over time. And and that will then be amplified potentially by the addition of the connecting building between the two arms. And just to be clear about it, those are three story buildings that exist there now. And at the backside, it's four. And so if you drive the building considerably this way into that space, you're creating a well that's essentially three and a half or four stories deep. And I know that you have dances and events that happen within there. And if we bound that space in that way, that deeply, it's going to make it a pretty noisy place when you have those kinds of events in there. And it's worth considering that.
So.
And that's all I really can.
Greg, I'm sorry I hate to interrupt, but just to speak to your question a moment ago, I know you're asking the board to give you an answer right now. And this is a lot of wonderful, hopeful information that you all are sharing with us. But it's it's a first. It's been several months pre-COVID since we were able to to see all this. And I know Julie and I, we meet weekly and we chat. And I I just would like some time and even staff to have a conversation with the board, Mike involved in everything, so we can facilitate a conversation. Because it's kind of like cold calling right now. It's a little much for them to try and tell you what they they want. So I don't know what your timeline is like. Well, as I've mentioned, we don't have the survey. So we're just going to continue to learn more about the site. But once we do have the survey, it would be good to start to get things in the vicinity on the north and the west side of the building laid out. So we're not expecting an answer tonight. But definitely just wanted to get the conversation started. I know that losing parking in any way is always a very hot button topic, so.
Yeah, I'd like to say, just to be clear, that we can solve this in a number of different ways. But you'll have a sense of where your priorities lie and how we do that. And and so we can even, when the discussion happens, provide visuals to show you what the different ways of solving it are.
And that's grateful. I I like the way you positioned it, Julie. We're starting the conversation and we have Mike here to be a bridge. And, you know, Julie and I, we've been talking. And I know the board would appreciate time to think and then to revisit the different choices, so. Yep, we have a lot of moving pieces still, a lot of things up in the air and a lot of ongoing conversations. So I'll put this one out there as well. Great, thank you. All right, I'm going to jump back into here. So we've got this, whoops, can't see yet. There we go.
Julie, when you could bring that site plan up, I just wanted to mention one other thing. To Greg's point, there's a lot of options available to us. And obviously, the direction that the district chooses to go will will help us to define what that direction is. With this, what we're trying to show here with this site plan that you're seeing on your screen is more or less the the most simplistic version of making it work. But as Greg indicated, you know, we do have concerns about there just not being much proper between the Loemeyer and in front of the building. The other thing that we've got some some general information from our civil engineer to date, they've provided some spot elevations, because obviously, as we add this addition on the northwest side of the building, we have entry exits that we have to account for that we didn't have to, you know, that weren't accounted for previously when the addition wasn't there. And the site slopes pretty significantly from the east to the west. So the entry that you're seeing over there at the new middle school entry is about seven feet higher than the the entry that will need to enter the the new addition. So we'll have to address the slope as well from the east side to the west side to allow for connection to both entries. So again, as Julie said, once we get the the survey, we'll know a little bit more. The the basic information we have to date, we think that we, you know, have a a pretty good understanding, but we want to be a little bit more specific in how we address that stuff.
And and just to be clear, what Greg just said is all true. But even that is there are several ways to solve that as an issue. But what we don't want to do is solve it in a way that in five or eight years, whenever you decide to do phase two, that we put a lot of complicated material and and expense into a solution that will be compromised by the addition of the new building. We want to anticipate the future growth in the way that makes the most sense for you guys.
Well, I I appreciate the emphasis. Like, we understand the investment we do now. And I really do appreciate us scaffolding this whole process moving forward. And I'm glad we have a little bit of time, because we realize the gravity of it, because it's an investment, a big one.
Yep.
I think next we've got some views, 3D views. So these are actually from the program that we do all of our construction documentation in. So they're a little less pretty and a little more technical than what you've seen from Greg in the past. But this is the middle school entry here. The canopy, again, because of the seven foot difference in grade, the canopy is either going to slope or step or something as it approaches the high school entry over here. The materials on the addition are primarily brick. So Maplewood has a ninety percent brick ordinance. So we will have a lot of brick that will match your existing brick. Glazing storefront, we've got a couple of images of of finishes for that further into the presentation. So these are the big windows looking into the classroom spaces at the front of the library. And then this is the one by the library desk. And then this is the Student Services vestibule and then the corridor approaching the gym over here. So this is the gym box. And we are proposing masonry, but a a block finish as a base here. So speaking to kind of the stone base in the existing building, this is egress out of that stairwell and a little piece of canopy above that.
I'd like to speak to that for a second, please.
Yep.
The bottom line is, while we're not mimicking formally the existing building, we have some different things going on. We're going to use the material choices consistently, so it's not seen as something and grafted on to the old one. The brick will match. We'll use on the existing building, you use big pieces of limestone as a base condition. That'll be relatively expensive and difficult to do. Instead, we'll use ground face block that is a more decorative element, but it'll look visually as if it's a consistent element to the base on the existing building. And that's the gray that's reflected in this thing. And and then the the materials that are metalwork, which are the window openings and the coping, which is the cap of walls and all those things, will have a silver anodized color, so that they'll be a little bit brighter and more polished looking. And at the end of the day, we'll be simplifying some of the gestures in the building that are there as we add layers on top of them, so that it's more consistent with that model I showed you a minute ago.
What's not showing up here is brick detailing. So a different inset or outset brick here and then above the window heads as well. So there's another level of detail that isn't coming out clearly in these images.
Julie, I'm going to show that in the model for a minute. I think it'll explain it better.
Okay, let me get through these, because I think these are the last ones, then you can have it. There's the cafeteria, which we've seen already. And then these are just some images, so masonry, brick, the ground face CMU, and then metal finish on the storefront doors and canopies. I think that's it. Yep, so you can have it, Greg.
Okay. I'm trying. This oversimplifies it a little bit, because the the pattern that was reflected as a differentiator on the face of the building doesn't quite show up in this. But again, it's a it's a base condition that's consistent and similar to the limestone base that's used on the rest of the building. And then a brick pattern thing above that, so that instead of it being a great big wall, it's something that's a little bit more broken into smaller components and doesn't feel as big. The other thing we've done is the windows down here are just about sort of letting people out on the street, see what's going on in the building. It's a view thing. We also put these unit skylights in the top of the roof here. We've talked about that with you before. We understand how green stuff is important to you. It's important to us as well. Many green, many stores now, like Lowe's, for example, or the big boxes, they they put a series of these unit skylights into the roof and they effectively don't have to use the electrical lighting in the building very much. And so we've built that idea into it as well. So at the end of the day, it will look different, but still colored and and behave similarly to the existing building. That's all I have.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
I'm, I I just want to say wow. It's overwhelming. You know, I've been part of several bonds and lots of construction. And this has by far been the most organized and detailed presentation this early in the process. I feel a sense of relief also to know that we can do so much, because oftentimes in the past, we've kind of had to piece some things together, because we just didn't have the bonding capacity. So so grateful to all of your work, Julie, and the team's work at Itner. And incredibly grateful to the community that trusted us to be able to do this. And super excited about what's coming forward. So thank you very, very much.
We're super excited too, and we will plan to provide. And we will plan to provide this presentation to you all following the meeting. I apologize that I could not provide it in advance, but I think we were working on it until about 6:24 tonight. So we will package it up and get it to you all. And you can look at it in more detail and and let us know if you have questions or concerns moving forward.
Yes, thank you for everything.
All right. Yes, obviously, this is just the beginning of more conversation, not the end. So if there are questions, we'll have opportunities for that. I'm not sure who wants to talk through the the work orders or task.
Yes, so yeah, thank, thank you. The task orders are going to be facilitated by Mike.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Let's go to 2.02, task order number three, MRH Elementary renovations. I'll turn it over back to Julie.
I'm going to turn it over to Todd, but I can pull it up on the screen if you all want. You've probably heard enough from me and he definitely is better at speaking to this type of thing anyway, so.
Wow, you guys saved all the exciting stuff. So, all right, I'm going to make this extremely brief. This is, nothing here is new. Julie said it very well at the beginning of the meeting. When we were working on our contract with all of you, we knew we were doing a major project at the high school, middle school. And we documented that in our contract. We didn't know what we were going to do elsewhere. So we left, as we talked about way back when, we left it open that we'll figure out what we're doing in a form of a bunch of task orders. So task order two was the was one we didn't know about at the time. That was actually the modular building you're you're procuring right now. So task orders three and four are just documenting the scope we've already defined through multiple, multiple months of work for the early childhood in the elementary school. So this scope of work is an exact replica of everything Julie already went through. I basically excerpted it out of presentations that you have all been working through and I documented it here. So this is the scope of work. These eight areas are exact, you heard Julie say most all of these words already tonight. So that's the first part of the task order. This is what we're going to do. It all refers back, as you see at the bottom there, it refers back to our base, the big contract. So ever, all the terms and conditions are back in the big original contract. This just says at the at the elementary school, we're going to do this work. So the next page says, first, we say what we're going to do. Then we tell you who's going to be our team, who's on our team to do it, our engineers, our other consultants. So very, very clearly lined out. Some things we don't know, you might need an environmental engineer, you might not. So that's to be determined. So and some things, you haven't hired a special inspector or material tester for construction. Those are to be determined. So again, we just tell you who's going to be involved in doing the scope of work. The project budget, again, is a is a direct pull from Julie's earlier materials. You had $1.7 million of owner managed projects that you have ongoing. And then the rest of it is limited renovations at the ECC and then contingency. So and then the fees are all determined through, again, our base contract. So it's very straightforward. And at the end, you get a total project budget. Again, these numbers have all been pulled directly from previous presentations. And then the last thing that you probably haven't seen on the last page is we put a schedule to it, of course. When when is ITNER going to deliver this and and the contractor that you hire too? So we've already done most of the legwork. The programming is already done for these task orders. We did it during the summer. We've documented the buildings. We've even done a fair amount of the schematic design. Julie's already showed it to you. But the task orders are kind of following that up. So because you guys have been really busy getting school going, we were just going ahead and kind of getting these things done. So programming is already done, schematics are underway. We expect to finish them this month. We'll finish the design development and the details in October. We'll wrap it up with this construction documents and basically our bidding documents in November. The only question is, when will we bid? And we put it next winter. And again, that's very much up to you, all of you. I can say that obviously, and hopefully, that our current conditions don't persist. But I would only say that if it if it seems like you're still going to have the ability to get into buildings, to do construction, maybe we advance this bidding schedule. We bring it closer to us and we get it, get the buildings, get them bid, get it awarded and go ahead and get the work done while the buildings are largely empty. You know, I know, I know we have staff there, but without students there, we could get a lot of work done. If it appears that everything's going to break loose and everybody's coming back for the spring semester, then this bidding schedule probably fits a little better where we try and do the bulk of the work in the summer timeframe. There is work that is going to have to occur while the buildings are occupied. But we'll work through those details. And then the last part, just simply, again, this is a direct pull from our from our overarching contract. This just defines how those basic, how those fees you already saw were determined. So quite simple, just a brief documentation of that. So task order four is ditto. We'll we'll call it up, but you're going to see the only thing that's really different is the scope of work. So this again is the exact scope of work Julie already talked about. It rolls down into the same group of consultants. It obviously has its own unique budget. And the schedule is the same. So we're basically, we're doing the ECC and elementary work, parallel tracks. We'll get them finished at the same time. And again, our advice as far as bidding would be the same. If we can, if we can get into these buildings sooner, let's do it. If not, you know, let's look at kind of straddling next summer to try and get as, you know, try and get as much done as we can during that unoccupied timeframe. Any questions about that?
These task orders are on our board meeting agenda for next week for action items. So again, if folks want to dig in a little deeper. But again, Todd, thanks for the reminder that this is all unknown information to us throughout the the process.
Right, yeah, this is, this is really just memorializing things you've been through, probably better than a half dozen times. So. But again, since we couldn't define it earlier, we have to define it as we go along. And and you know, there will be a task order five and a six. And you know, who knows what all comes comes down the line.
Thank you so much, yeah. The ITNER team, everything is so clear and concise, very thorough. Really appreciate everything. You all are great collaboration with us, so great partners, thank you.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
And you all are dismissed from the meeting if you.
Stay.
Yeah, they're certainly welcome to stick around for the the data discussion, but.
Good time here at Powers House, so.
Well, just a really good segue into the data tracking. Can you mind? I just jumped in. You know, just the power of community, just believing in the future and having hope, passing property. And look at us today. We have all of this to look forward to. And it's, it's so joyful to think that we're doing all this for our children and for our community at large. And I want to thank ITNER, I want to thank the community, I want to thank the board, teachers and the administrators all coming together to make this happen. And knowing that that is there, we need to think about our next step in our current reality and thinking about our pandemic and tracking the data and where we are. Knowing as a community, we can stand together and we can push through. And we have weathered a lot together since March. As I prepared for this meeting, I thought, my goodness, so much has happened at that point. And just personally trying to figure out, okay, I need certain tools to help me to try and figure out, how are we going to manage as a school community in this environment? The task force worked diligently for multiple weeks, coming up with different plans, trying to figure out, how do we respond to this? And the whole idea, and the best practice nationally, was for school districts to be able to respond to community spread, knowing that what we were told back in March, April and May, that things could fluctuate for us when we go into school. So we fast forward to where we are now. And we finally have, what I was very concerned about is that we have the the tools that we need to try and figure out how to analyze what is a good time for us to reenter into school. Like I said before, the task force, different departments, different administrators all came together and were very vigilant with finding the best resources and guidance, working collaboratively to plan three different ways. So with that in mind, finding, okay, when is it the best time? What are the data points in? Again, last, I'm glad you're here today because I remember you wanting to know exactly what was that? And it didn't even exist, man. It was, it was a lot of blood, sweat and tears begging, but it happened. And so you all were able to review before the meeting the most recent information from EdPlus for the data tracking, which consists of five different things that you were able to review. It's the transmission rate for the community, the RNOT, as they call it, the positivity rate, daily new cases. And then these two are the same, but the time period is different. The seven day average of new case. And lastly, the 14 day average of new cases. Now, one of the other things that was requested of me is also, what are some other data points to consider? And that was also brought to the health professionals pretty regularly from the superintendents to support us with that. And I'd have to say that the St. Louis County Health Department has been a good partner as much as they possibly could. And if you check, and I gave you all hyperlink for review, they have the ZIP code and the age group data, which is really important to review moving forward, is is available for for your review as well. So I I'm going to share my screen just so you all. Just a second. See. Hold on a second. My button is never visible, I'm sorry about the delay. Okay. So everyone can see this together. So this isn't new. This data is new. It's from yesterday, but the format is not unfamiliar to you. So of course, I already told you, there are five different reports that we were looking at from my group from EdPlus that we put together. And so this is the reproductive rate, the RNOT. And this is where we are right now. I pointed out to you all earlier, just a footnote there that the St. Louis region transmission rate is up slightly, if you could see it, from September 8. But it's lower than what it was in August and in late July. It's the second lowest regional transmission rate and in just in the region. Just to note, as a comparison, Kansas City has the lowest, it's under one. And then here's a bar graph with it there. And to note, again, the thresholds, looking for moving to one or less is what has been recommended. Here is the positivity rate, which if you look, St. Louis County, St. Louis County positivity rate past week, where we are right now, staying in the yellow. What does the yellow mean? Here we have this color coding. And I talked about this the last time, that this model is based on the recommendations from Harvard with like these thresholds and percentages. And then also the 100,000 number as the denominator, which you will see in just a moment, is recommended from from Harvard University. So here we have new cases. And there we are here, St. Louis County, with the color coding. And again, 25 cases per 100,000, that would be red. And so forth, you see that here, we've talked about that before. And then this is the 14 day comparison change in new cases. And actually, this goes on to the second page with St. Louis County being in the first column. Moving on, you'll see the change from September 1st to September 7th versus the 25th and the 31st, the week before. So it dropped, which made it go into the green. And of course, there is the legend there that describes that. You know, one interesting thing that was shared with the superintendent group was more information from Harvard, since we're using that framework is this document. And I hope everyone had a chance to kind of frame your mind around the color coding and what they considered healthy learning spaces or specific pandemic resilient learning spaces, which was really interesting language, especially. See, here's the reference to the 100,000 people, how many new cases per that number. And then what the recommended strategies for that. So this was something that was shared to the group to kind of give more of a context to just the numbers and the colors. So other things that have been happening in conjunction with St. Louis County being responsive to superintendents and hearing some of the the concerns we had and in need of tools and information for guidance. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have been very active and supportive. And also DHS, they've been working hand in hand. And they just updated their guidance document last Friday. And I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that and you were able to to read that. And I already mentioned before that the St. Louis County Health Department has been making updates in how they're recording and and tracking information and especially around age group data. Because just now, this week, St. Louis County is is giving the recommendation for younger students to return back to school. And they're really encouraging that even though there may be a spike with the communicate or the community transmission, to focus on truly on the age group. They want to make sure that you're not just focusing on one, but you're looking at multiple data points. And that in particular is one of them to to really look and see, okay, with this age group that they're recommending, how is all of these other data points responding to what's going on in the community? So that was one of the things that was brought up in the conversation today. That was what's been shared with the group. And you know, and one of the things that is asked regularly and all of us that sit in on these meetings, you know, what is now different than anything else? And why are you making this recommendation? And she's saying that, you know, overall, things are tracking in the direction where the community. things are tracking in the direction where the community spread is not as, as frequent as it was before. And they feel that the things that they have given in terms of guidance, like wearing the mask and social distancing, people are starting to follow it. So that was one of the things like, why now? Why, why are you doing this? We talked about that this, this morning. And this is what they feel that the effect of those things, those guidance that have been given now to everyone is taking effect from the greater community. So are there any questions right now with what you have and what's been presented?
I have a question, Karen. Looking at the Harvard study, when it was talking about the pandemic resilient learning spaces, it referred to outdoor learning as a, as a preference. It showed classrooms with like six to eight kids in it only, things like that. Is that correct?
Yes. If you can, some of the recommendations, yes.
Right. Well, and of course, if, if you can, but it seemed to, to refer to that being the pandemic resilient type of learning space.
Yes, that's what they have named it, yes.
Okay. Karen, in the conversations with Spring Schmidt, you know, there's been a lot of emphasis on the pretty significant spike of cases in 15 to 19 year olds. And are they attributing that to something specific? Information shared.
Well, yeah, it's a really good question. And despite, well, of course, they're, they're not in school primarily. And that is what's so hard with this right now. There could be cases and it's not necessarily coming from school. When you have young adults, 15 to 19, you know, they are out and about in different spaces. If you have a teenager, you know, they're driving, they're congregating, they're with friends. And in, in terms of really pinpointing and the contact tracing, it's hard to, at this point in time, really nail that down. Most of the age group right now, they, they, if anything, they're involved in athletics, if they're involved in anything, but attributing it to school, you know, just about everyone, not all school districts, but just about all of them are virtual. They're not in, in spaces together.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm wondering what the connection the health department may be making between opening up some sports, you know, opportunities and seeing that spike. So, you know, my, my follow-up question then, you know, and this is probably a question for, for Spring or for, you know, others in the health department is, you know, with the very low transmission rate of the nine and under sort of age range, is it reasonable to assume that that's because those kids aren't going anywhere? And once schools start to open up, we could see a spike in that age group. And, you know, again, just, I, I, I know you're not the health professional, but that's obviously a concern of mine that we're not seeing a lot of transmission in the, you know, nine and under because they don't, they don't have the space in a school to be transmitting. So I, I'll just express that. I won't put you on the spot to answer that. I know it's not your, it's not your area of expertise, so.
I guess the response, if I'm going to try and channel her and I'm going to put myself on the spot because I'm not, you know, a public health official. But there's, there's an opportunity to still contract the virus, even if you're not at school. And it could be from holidays, it could be from playdates. It's just one of the things that they were trying to express to us, that this is not necessarily the only place where it could happen. It could come from somewhere else. And I know transmission can happen here, of course, here meaning school. But the response to school, they're, the planning is that there are protocols and the adults that are in the space, they're practicing what needs to be done with the masking, with the engineering controls, with the social distancing, and being very intentional and consistent in practicing those methods can keep people safer. Versus being out somewhere else, it's a different environment. So that's what they're thinking is, knowing that the transmission rate is low and has been consistently low, that, you know, in a school, when you're really being intentional about keeping people safe, that's why they're thinking that, okay, let's open that up for that age group.
Karen, how frequently is the county planning on getting information by age group? And, you know, I think they have it by ZIP code in here as well and a lot of that. Are they doing weekly updates? Or do you know how frequently that data gets refreshed?
Well, I thought it was going to be weekly. Again, they say that this is a heavy, heavy lift. And they're trying to keep, and they are also understaffed. But I thought it was going to be weekly. That was what I understood.
I think the granularity of their data, you know, is helpful to see. And, and I think we'd want to see more of it, you know, if there's any way to express, you know, pressure on them to sort of continue to provide that particularly, you know, by age group. And as, you know, districts are starting to think about a phased re-entry for younger students in particular, you know, that, that, that'd be a critical data point for us. You know, in addition to sort of understanding, you know, what our plan of attack. I mean, I think they'll, you know, any, any tier change would, would to me, signal three to four weeks of prep time or at least to kind of make that happen?
It would have to be, yes, four weeks for sure. I'm testing the waters on that. Whenever the decision is made, it's, okay, yes, then four weeks or five weeks on, we would have to plan.
And we would be assessing data throughout that four week period as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I don't think that's something we could ever stop because that's the nature of this novel, novel virus. It's going to fluctuate. The reason why everyone has planned multiple ways to educate during the pandemic.
I appreciate Francis's questions. And yeah, would definitely like to see the data that he spoke on. And I just wanted to add to Katie's question or expression that she was giving. You know, I looked at the letters that Dr. Page and, and the acting director, Spring Schmidt issued. And they made sure to let the public know that it would be, you know, what's comfortable for the districts. So I understand that they are saying that, you know, with the age group that we're discussing right now, it would be all right to go back into the schools. But I think we should focus on what we've always been doing, which is to look at data and to do what is best for our district. So I just wanted to add on to what Katie was expressing earlier.
So can I ask for planning purposes? What is best? I guess I want to ask the board, what is the target that you're looking for now that we have data?
I, you know, I actually want, I, I want to hear from you on that, Karen, because you, you know, are, are leading through this. And I know that this is like, you've never done this before. We, we all have never done this before. But I, I am looking to you and I'd like to know, you know, what is comfortable for you? When we're looking at the dashboard and we're looking at red, yellow and green, what is comfortable for you and why? Because that's going to help me to understand, okay, this is why our superintendent is looking at this. This is the reason, and that's going to help me with the decision as well.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I appreciate that collaboration in that regard because I, I'm really concerned. And you had asked me that the last time we met, I guess last week. I'm very concerned with the students being out for much longer period of time because the transition is at least four weeks to do that.
I have a question about that myself, though. I was wondering, what is it that we need to contemplate doing between when the board decides, okay, in four weeks where we think we'll be okay? Or we want, why are, why can't, are, are there things that can't be getting done right now to shorten that four week window?
No, well, I would say it's a good question. But for planning reasons in terms of switching platforms, instructionally, and you know, Roxanna can give some input on that. It, it, we're going from being 100% in classrooms and then we're trying to shift and to have part-time in the building. So you have to also think about auxiliary departments, like food service. They have to order the food. We have to ensure that we have the transportation in the routes if they're going to be on the bus. So it's not just teaching in the classrooms. It's the whole operation of schooling. It's working with our teachers, making sure, so it goes on and on and on. You know, making sure we have the protocols, they know about leave. Everybody knows the protocols and how to respond. And we are all on the same page and we understand what we need to do. So there's different levels that we have to address to make sure we're ready.
So just with respect to the food, of course, you wouldn't want to order food and then not be able to use it.
Well, right. And then also she'll have two methods of, of feeding kids because not all kids would be coming back. So we still have folks doing the drive-through, picking up bag meals. So that will continue. And then also she'll be feeding kids in-house. So there takes a lot of management and to get that. And also you have to think about staffing in order to handle all the food, food service.
I had one more, I had one more question with respect to our returning, the more in class or more in building type of schooling. Those, those parents who still choose to keep their kids on the MRH virtual plan can do so, right?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I, I saw some emails this afternoon that indicated that they felt that it was one, it was binary. It was this and not that. So I just wanted to see if that confusion cleared up.
Well, there were different pathways depending upon what parents wanted to do for re-entry. And one pathway is with our platform called It's Learning. And you've heard that before, we've talked about that off and on. And that was designed for being with MRH the full time, even if we go back to brick and mortar. And you're with your classroom, you know, 100% of the time. And then there's another pathway with a platform called SchoolsPLP. And that is, you know, you want, and that's a parallel, you know, learning experience. So you would just stay in that virtual realm and say, okay, I want to stay home, have some contact with MRH teachers, but knowing that you were going to stay at home. And deciding that was a better fit for the student and the families. And knowing that you wouldn't go back to brick and mortar. They just wanted to stay at home. So it is, it's, it's two, though.
Yeah, well, okay. I, I, well, I guess what I'm, they, they have an option
Yeah.
available to them.
Well, my understanding is that they don't, though. They've already had to choose that option. And now if they've chosen all virtual, then they're, they're all virtual. If they've chosen the tiered and you guys, and we say you go back into the building now, they can't just stay home. Is that not?
Well, you, you, there's a 10 day window if families wanted to change their mind.
Which is ends what tomorrow? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so after that window, if they're not, if they're in the tiered, the tiered program, and there's a vote to, to go back into the building and they don't want to do that, what, what are their options?
Options at that point, again, by your policy, is that they would either need to return to campus or they could withdraw their student and homeschool. Or if they have a, by your policy, a documented health need or a discipline issue, then we have workarounds. But the largest issue is we purchase those seats from mocap courses. And a lot of that, there's windows in terms of when we can purchase those seats. And those windows are closing because positions fill. We purchased our, our K through six option. We purchased, and we bought a few extra seats because we don't know what, what happens with kids health-wise and individuals. So we're prepared for health emergencies. But the virtual, again, the virtual, all virtual option is controlled by a different set of state statutes and a different set of enrollment options. And so we've tried to be very clear about that all the way through so that folks know. And I know the principals called all of the families as well to be very clear about what those tiered options were. So if we come back in the tiered.
The principals called all the families?
They called, when we, we were deciding tiers, they called and talked to families about what those options meant, particularly families that were choosing option two, which is the.
I, I didn't want to get that call.
Wes, do you have additional questions there on, on the mechanics?
At this time, no, I do not.
I, I've got another just curiosity, Karen, maybe this came up with the superintendent's conversation. But, uh, you know, there's been some reports that at least two Catholic schools have had to shut down, you know, after opening only a few weeks ago. Was there any discussion about how, you know, we, we can obviously theorize about what a return to school would look like for, for us, but was there any discussion of what the realities are looking like in, in Jennings? I know you mentioned previously, or in some of these private or parochial schools, or even what the conditions in St. Charles have been in reality?
Well, what the reality is, is so different with each situation. To specifically talk about a Catholics, we haven't talked about those cases. But what's discussed is your reaction because it could be a classroom or it could be a whole building. It all depends on contact tracing. So the reality is around getting really clear on how to roll out that process and having enough staff trained. That's what we've talked about. Those like Fox is open right now. And Matt Superintendent was saying that that was something that really needs to be thought out to ensure to keep up with, okay, if there is a potential case, how do we then go through the steps? So we have three people at this point in time that have gone through the six hour training. And then they also go through all of the information and work in conjunction with St. Louis County. So they will come in as well. But that's really the, the, the key is being able to really figure out, okay, what happened and having the conversation with the person who had had the symptoms. It's this whole process and it's really involved. And it's really involved in terms of identifying what happened with that person and who they've had contact with. So when you sometimes hear about, and this is what they're sharing, the health department, that it sometimes can be misleading where there may be a case or it, it may happen outside of the school, it didn't happen while in class. It's really contained to a small group of people when you hear about a, a situation. Or, you know, people, another thing, uh, apart from contact tracing, it's just, okay, what are the protocols? Do they have protocols in place? Are people being vigilant about that? Are people masking? You know, there's so many different elements to that and things that people have to do. And part of the reason why there has to have planning in place and not move real fast, because you want to make sure the adults have what they need, they have the protocols, they have all the information and that they're ready and they have their comfort level moving forward to do the work. So that's what we've been talking about really along the lines that, you know, tangentially kind of, how do you respond to things like that if there is a case is what we've talked about.
Karen, I have a question about your concern. So you, you told us how you're very concerned about children being out for so long and my question is really, when we voted to have our, like, most vulnerable students, for example, like students that are in our SS, are in SSD, excuse me, to be able to come onto campus and go through like safety protocols and, and everyone's going through safety protocols so they can get in-person interaction, does that not address the, the concern? Because we are getting to our most vulnerable population during this pandemic, while we're also trying to wait for transmission rates to reach a certain low?
So my response to your initial question is, I'm thinking about all children. My response is all children, regardless if they're receiving special needs or, or not, they're all having an impact on, on what's happening right now in all this time. So yes, what we voted on addresses that, you know, we want to move forward with that. We are going to elaborate on our planning, yes, but that does not address the rest of the student population. So that's what I'm talking about with everyone. And what I was asking the board, I'm, I'm saying we need to move forward with the planning that we have and the guidance that we followed with the plans that we had for tier two. And if there is something different as the board, you feel that a threshold should be different, I think we should have dialogue about that. Because from what, you know, I've shared with you, there's not one magic number that says this is it, not unless you all are looking for something otherwise. So that's the reason why I'm asking, like, what, what, what are you all thinking? What are you all feeling in terms of that comfort level? You know, and I hear what you're saying and that makes sense to me, but I feel like there needs to be a dialogue moving forward is to what, what is the comfort level that you all kind of feel from your vantage point?
I don't know that I'm looking for a particular number, though I'm open to suggestions from you guys about what, what that would look like. I think what concerns me still is that there's still quite a bit of fluctuation. Going from green to red, to yellow to re, red, to yellow to gr- all the back and forth. And, and that may be something that stays consistently. But I'd like to, now that we're at least able to start looking at the data on a regular basis, start to be able to, to see that over a, a course of time. And I'm not committed to it being a certain amount of time, just being able to see enough data to, to feel that we're making an informed decision when we decide to send, you know, to have the kids go back. Because there are true life and death consequences as well. And, and I agree, you know, we want everyone to be able to learn a, and, and the right environment that is so important. And, and no matter how good the program is, there's still going to be a gap there created. And so we need to address that too. But I also, you know, we're looking at families and, and family units that, that are potentially being destroyed as, as well by COVID. I know that a lot of college students have gone back and yes, they're older than, than the students we're talking about. But now we've got, what, 7,000 infected? You know, it, it's, it's a, a huge number and it's creating serious consequences.
Can I chime in here really quickly? Because I don't want to forget this thought. Nikki, I, I agree with you that this is our decision and we don't have to make it based upon recommendations of politicians or even the county health department where, who are not politicians. But I also think that we are having to look at this at a regional approach. Because the data is coming to us in a regional approach, although they are providing it by zip code. We still don't know within that zip code of 63117, how many are MRH families and how many might be Clayton, Ladue, Brentwood, whatever that might be. So I think one piece of data that is going to be important to incorporate into this is what are our neighboring schools' decisions look like? When are they contemplating their return backs? Who, I mean, we know who is back, but we also know our, a, a lot of our neighbors are not. So I would like to see if we could broaden that a little bit and include that within the data. Not that we're going to make our decision based upon what Clayton or Webster does. But I think it's important for us to have that, because that's the circles in which our families typically run and it's our neighbors. And if we have to look at data regionally, then I think that's important to know as well.
I agree with Maria.
I think that's good.
I think that's smart.
I, I would also just argue, and I think Nikki, you kind of brought this up too, and Karen, it can be filtered through you, but I, I would also want to hear from our building administrators and, you know, principals to sort of say, you know, what they're, you know, I'm sure you, you guys are talking about kind of what's going on in neighboring districts, what's, what a phased, you know, what, I think we're actually talking about maybe even a hybrid of the hybrid phase two, right? Where it could, it could mean just younger learners are coming back and, and not anybody above you know, a certain grade level, or it's coming back in, in different phases. I don't think we're able to kind of craft that intelligently, you know, to, to, in terms of a plan. And I think we also have to sort of de-stigmatize the idea of even talking about that as, you know, it's an important discussion and planning needs to take place while we're assessing the data and the information and, you know, the, there, I think this topic landed on the community in a way that I think, you know, I got a lot of panicked feedback that we're immediately voting to, to change tiers tonight. And I don't think that is the messaging. And I think we need to be able to have this conversation without, you know, jumping to this conclusion of us forcing through or making any rushed decisions. I, I don't think this board has that in its, you know, you know, this is not something we want to do with, with forcing a decision through without thoughtful deliberation coming from a lot of different sources. And I just want that to be publicly sort of a part of this conversation, because I think there, it's understandable, there's some parents that are certainly and community members and everyone certainly on edge when, when they see this. But we have to be able to kind of continue this conversation in a way that doesn't sort of polarize the thought of even going back shouldn't necessarily preclude us from having that conversation. It doesn't mean we're making that decision right then and there.
In planning. And, and I, I just, thank you. I appreciate opening it up so we can talk about this. And, and I know many of you say we need to innovate and I, I agree completely, but we need to really talk together about this. Planning is, is so important and I, I, I appreciate the regional approach and things are, are shifting publicly, you, you don't know, but I just want to say that there's a lot of discussion amongst the group about the shift. And again, I don't feel that it should drive us and I don't want us to feel rushed, because I don't feel that's appropriate for us to hurry up and do something. I just, for many reasons, I don't think that's okay. But I do want to add that, um, Maria, it's, there's talk and I don't think it's appropriate for me to like call anybody out, but nothing officially is happening, but it, it's been discussed, kind of like what Francis is saying. They're talking about it. They're looking at the data, meaning boards and their superintendents about the possibilities, because now we have it. And so that's, that, the things that boards are doing now, trying to decide, okay, you know, staff, tell us more about your plan, what would this look like on your end? Like I said, I need at least four weeks and this is the reason why. You know, what's the comfort level? Because you represent your constituency, looking at the data, you know, these things coming together really is a best fit for MRH.
Well, I, I don't want to, you know, cut off conversation prematurely. I know we, a couple of weeks ago, said that we would want to take a look at, you know, several weeks of, of data, you know, as we, you know, make, continue to be data-driven in this. So, um, I, I know there, it's been, it's been a, a time coming and thank you for bringing all the information forward this evening, Karen. I know we had discussed previously having a dedicated time to look at this data and I think beginning next week, um, we'll be able to start doing that. I think this is an, is important enough that we pull it out of the board, the, you know, the, the monthly board meeting, um, next week that has obviously many things on it, but that we will, um, begin our Friday data review conversation. So that'll give us the chance to see, you know, two weeks in a row and, and just start to to track if the data is continuing to move in the direction that we would want to see it move in if we were going to be able to, to feel comfortable and safe in buildings again. So, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, where we've, you know, amended the agenda to not include an action item this evening, but just wanted to kind of tie this back all together. And part of the reason of sharing this before making decisions is so that if there are questions and concerns, we have a chance to, you know, have those, those brought up in more detail after this meeting too.
Katie, forgive me, I just, I just want to get clarification before we move on and I won't drag us out. Karen, I, I had asked you that question about like, you know, the, the color on our matrix or our dashboard, like what you're comfortable with. And I don't want to make an assumption. I, I assumed based on like what you said, you're comfortable with yellow, but I don't want to make that assumption. And so I just want to ask, you know, am I correct? Are, are you comfortable with yellow on that dashboard?
I, um, yes, I, I am. And I'm going to qualify that response. I don't want to rush. I want to make sure all of our ducks in a row. I want to work with my staff and their comfort level, that they feel that they have the tools that they need. That they feel supported and we know, like I said before, about our leaves and how we respond. I want more people with contact tracing to get that certification through Johns Hopkins. There are things that I want to make sure are in place. But we have to be vigilant, we have to be resilient. I feel that as time progresses and we have more students at home and families that are at home, it's going to cause a lot of harm. I am really worried about that. So directly, yes. To answer your question, but I can qualify it by, I'm not going to rush into it. I want it to be thoughtful. I want to continue to follow the data that's going on in the region. And, um, all the other things to tighten up our plan. I feel confident with our tier two, but I want to review it and tighten it and re-communicate with everyone to make sure people are confident about what it would look like for them in all of our departments.
Karen, I appreciate that. And I think to the point that both Wes and Francis brought up too, is that I, I, I think that we would all like to see the tightened, you know, plans and, and the understanding, you know, of the additional folks that get training and contact tracing or whatever, you know, I think planning, um, you know, could be planning that never gets implemented, but I think it's, it's planning that's worth through right now. And so, um, you know, I, I, I appreciate the, the framing that Francis took of, you know, we're, we're de-stigmatizing that, that, that we might be, you know, making plans. We're not saying that we're about to unveil, you know, or enact plans. We're saying we're, you know, we got to, as you know, well, we have to plan before we can act. So, um, I think, yes, please, please keep planning, please keep, um, you know, improving the protocols with the hope that, uh, at some point we will be able to use those.
Will do.
Great. All right, team. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. A second?
Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Uh, thanks for sticking it out. Good meeting this evening and we'll see y'all next Thursday.
Good night, folks.
Bye. Thank you.